I'm just so used to the commissioners always being a little bit late that I thought I'd have some skirt time here.
Well, a couple of things before we start. First of all, we're missing Commissioner O'Donnell this morning because he's at the East Bank of the new committee that he's on. So he will be a little bit late, be coming in a little bit later. The second thing is so that I keep seeing emails from Tim and from the manager about Zubilee. I want to make sure everybody knows Zubilee is coming and that I am also selling tickets to it. So disregard any emails you get from the manager or from Tim. Just let me know how many tickets you need to Zubilee and we'll take care of you. Anyway, with that out of the way.
Okay, very good. Good, sir? Then we're ready to start.
Mr. Manager, what do you have this morning?
We have several items this morning to talk about. First, and we have no meeting next week, so there's no agenda review, but Sheena's going to talk about, and I think we're going to get a demonstration from the company on Jelly Vision, which is an instrument that our employees can use to help them select benefits. So that's going to take a few minutes. I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about a plan moving forward with the EMS OMD situation and the merger. And Mr. Leeds is here to talk about that, as well as Dr. Gallagher and Director Mock. We have to resolve the MAPC appointment discussion. We have two MAPC appointments to make at the 9/4 meeting, so we just want to talk about candidates and how you want to move forward with those. And then I want to have various staff give a report out on high groundwater status projects that we've been working on for the last couple of months. So with that, if you're ready, we'll let Jelly Vision get started and we'll go from there.
Good morning, Sheena.
Good morning. As you recall from the budget process, changes are coming for our 2020 health insurance benefit. Next year, our employees will have three coverage options for their healthcare needs: a base plan, a premier plan, and a high deductible health plan with an option of a health savings account. Through the RFP process, we have secured a vendor to help us create an educational tool that is both informative and interactive. We understand that the insurance world is a bit confusing, and we wanted an education tool to assist our employees in their decision-making process. A decision-making tool known as Alex through the company Jelly Vision was the sole respondent to our RFP and one of the most reputable companies in the business. This instrument, Alex, will give our employees an opportunity to learn about their healthcare plans and decide which plan is best for them. Educating our employees is not only in the best interest of the employee, but it also helps us, the employer, to have these employees on the most economical plan. In the end, our goal is to educate our employees and help them make the most cost-effective coverage choice for their healthcare needs. Today, we have two representatives from Jelly Vision here to walk you through a demo of the Alex product: Brian Roback and Brian Palladie. They will walk you through a short demonstration and stand for any questions. And again, I will mention that this was approved by Bid Board and will be up for your consideration tomorrow. Brian?
Thanks, Sheena.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, everybody. So my name is Brian Roback. That there is Brian Palladie.
Morning.
And again, at the end, we'll open it up for any questions. But thank you again to Sheena and Heather and the rest of the HR team for our conversations over the past few months. We started conversations, as Sheena mentioned, around the employees had wanted change or had some changes, and they had also wanted more choices. And so we had added in the two additional plans for the upcoming plan year, including the high deductible with an HSA, which obviously a lot of employees have never seen, or if they potentially choose that plan, will not know how to use and consume. The second thing that we talked about is we're looking for a tool that is available 24/7, 365, to be able to use on their own time, because a lot of the employees of the county are not in front of computers to be able to consume those benefits. And the third, and also get that in the hands of their spouses, partners, and loved ones who might also be decision-makers for them as well. And then the third thing that we've talked about as well is that we want employees to continue to view their benefits as a strong point of working for the county, so that they know that the county continues to appreciate them, is doing right by them, and they continue to do what they love. And so this is a space that we at Jelly Vision are very familiar with. We work with over 30 different government groups already, including the state of Kansas already. They had actually just renewed for their second year, so they're using the exact same tool that you will be seeing here today. We also work with, for some other counties, we work with Fairfax County, Virginia, Mesa County, Broward County, and also the county of El Paso, Texas, on very similar types of initiatives. So just to tee up what you're going to be seeing here today, it is an abbreviated demo. It's not the full thing. If you'd like me to obviously get into more things in depth, I absolutely can, but for time purposes, we'll be showing a shortened version. Also, the way I'm going to be going through it, as if I am a member of the county, my wife is actually a county employee, and we have two kids. We're, this is right ahead of open enrollment, maybe end of September, beginning of October. The HR team has been working with their account manager over at Jelly Vision to help prepare and curate some marketing materials that we already have at Jelly Vision in place to be able to get the information in front of the, my wife, or in front of, sorry, in front of me, because my wife is actually a 911 center, a call center employee. So she works very long hours. Her shift today, when we receive the postcard, is going to be till 1:00 a.m. in the morning, and so she will not have time to look at benefits or research benefits when she gets home. And so it's my task for today to figure out what's going to make the most sense, both financially and for our family's future over the next year. And so, again, we get this simple postcard in the mail, and it says, "Make sure that the plans that you've been using over the past couple of years are still the best-fit value plan for your family. Talk to Alex." And there is a simple little URL link that is on that postcard. So I would then go to the computer, and I would type in this URL. I could also do it on my cellphone, on a tablet, or any other device. It works the exact same and will look the same that it does on the screens right now on any device. And so when I type in that link, it would open this up here. This is what we call the Alex homepage. So there's a lot of different things you can do from this homepage. It's also dynamic, so where you see here in the middle, this will continue to change as the year is going on. Right now, it is currently set to open enrollment. So if I come in to help pick the best value plan for my family, I would click on where it says, "Choose your benefits." And what that would do is that would launch the Alex Benefits Counselor Conversation. This is the abbreviated version that I have up here, and we would click on Get Started.
Hello, I'm Alex, here courtesy of your company. Can you hear me, talking to you with words? Are you married?
And so that very first question is immediately engaging me into the conversation. I already know that it's not going to be some 20-minute video that I let play and then have to, I take a quick cat nap, and then I come back to and answer some questions. I'm going to be actually having this conversation with Alex, and then these next couple of questions are personalizing the conversation for my family for this current plan year, also building trust as if I was speaking to a member of the HR team at the county. So yes, I am.
You are? Any kids?
I got two kids.
Two kids?
Mm-hmm.
If you give me your email address, I can send you a link to get back here, skipping all the questions and saving your progress.
So a couple of other things that I'll mention about Alex as well. Alex is, so again, on top of being mobile-friendly and being able to be accessed from any device, we are not asking for or storing any personal information of any member of the county or their families. And so that's something that a lot of the government groups really, really like, is the fact that none of this data is going to be stored or used, and the conversation cannot be tied back to any specific employee. The email is encrypted, and so all it's doing is it would be sending me a quick link if I were not to finish the conversation, to be able to pick it up where I left off, or run through the conversation multiple times when my wife gets home later that day or the next day. And so I would type in my email, and then for now, I'll just click Skip it.
Okay, it's your call. You see the little menu icon up in the left corner? You can click there to see your benefit options, and I'll keep track of your choices there as we go along.
Now I'll pause again. As you see here on the little menu here on the left, we will be speaking to all of the county's benefits. So it's not just medical or one specific thing. We will be speaking to all of the benefits. This is set up for demo purposes, so it's a demo set of benefits, but this conversation will be customized specifically to the plan documents of the county and go through the conversation. The other thing that's great about the conversation and the point of Alex is to get the employee to come back at little increments, and they're only spending somewhere usually between seven to 12 minutes at a time in the Alex conversation. And then it's about getting them to come back and educate them, like we'll see here in a second, to become better consumers throughout the year for that plan.
Let's start with medical. You have four medical plans to choose from. To help you figure out which plan is the right one for you, I can ask you some questions about how you'll use the plan and estimate your costs with each. Does that sound good? I can also show you a side-by-side comparison of the details of each plan, or explain how any of the plans work.
So Alex is set up to be choose your own adventure. So for me, I'm, and I'm a member of the county, there's two new plans. So we've never, we've only had that one plan that we've been choosing year over year. I have no idea what these two other plans are and how they're going to be able to help me. And so I probably will click on Explain How This Plan Works, or potentially see a side-by-side comparison of those different plans. But nine times out of 10, where I will start as an employee is click on Here, where it says, "Yes, let's estimate costs to help me pick that plan," and then from there, we'll continue to educate myself as need be.
Do you know if you'll cover your spouse on your medical plan? Or are you not sure because your spouse also has a plan available? You will, okay? Will you cover your children?
I still like both of them, so I will cover both.
Now, I need some estimates. Don't worry if you're not sure on these, we can always update them later. I'm going to start by talking about doctor visits. Not counting your once-a-year, fully-covered preventive checkup, how many times do you think you might see your primary care doctor? I'm talking about physically going into your doctor's office because you have a rash or the flu or something. Next, let's talk prescriptions. Do any of you have any ongoing prescriptions? I don't just mean something you happen to be taking now, but prescriptions you take regularly and expect to keep refilling. All right. Do you know if any of your prescriptions are brand name, or are they all generic? No problem, I'll just assume you have a mix of both. How many ongoing prescriptions do you have? And let me complicate this slightly for you. Leave out any that you know are preventive, generally things you take now to prevent a more serious problem down the road. If you only have preventive, just enter zero. I will factor that in.
So then from here, Alex will continue to ask a few more questions around my family and I's medical, expected medical costs for the upcoming year, including specialist visits, mental health, occasional prescriptions, ER, urgent care, and telemedicine use, also unexpected-type things, like maybe my family's going to be expecting to have a kid within the next year. Maybe we might have some unexpected surgeries or hospital stays that we should be factoring into our costs. And then from there, Alex is going to do a bunch of math, which we're going to see him do now.
Okay. Based on everything you said, using national cost averages and assuming you stay in-network, they make these so hard to... Oh! Okay, nice. This is the plan that will probably save you the most money for the care you said you'd need, without restricting you to referrals or in-network coverage. I would literally love to show you how I came to that conclusion.
So obviously, I'm going to be a little bit nervous. I've just been recommended a plan that I've never heard of before and never been on before, so yes, I absolutely would love for him to show me why.
Yes! I love this part. All right. Here is each plan with the one I just pointed out on top. First, let's look at what you'd pay to be on each plan, the premium that comes out of your pay. And if you never got sick or needed medical care, you'd have your least expensive plan right there. But that's not the full picture. Now let's add our estimated costs for medical care and prescriptions. A couple of the plans come with some money to help pay your medical expenses. That money's calculated into what you're seeing here. You'll notice that the plan up top isn't actually the one that'll cost you the least, but there's a reason. You said you wouldn't like to be on a plan that only covers in-network providers, and that's the case with this plan. And this plan requires you to get a referral from your primary care doctor before you see any specialists. That's why it looks like you might prefer the plan up top. Now, are you ready to see how the plans would handle a worst-case scenario where you need a lot of care? Every medical plan has a limit on how much you have to pay out-of-pocket for medical care. Once you hit the limit, the plan covers everything else. Most people never hit that limit because it usually takes a serious illness or injury to need that much care, but it does happen sometimes, so let's get hypothetical. The total you see here is what you pay to be on the plan, plus enough medical care to hit the limit, assuming you stay in-network and use any money you get with the plan. If you have a serious illness or injury, this is how bad it could get financially. As you can see, the plan on top would cost you a little more in this worst-case scenario, but assuming your actual medical care needs are closer to what you expected, it'll probably save you the most money, which is why I pointed it out. You can roll over the bars to see the numbers for each section if you want. Taking this all into account, that top plan seems like the best fit. What do you think?
And so again, it's set up to be choose your own adventure, especially since this was the recommended plan, is the high deductible. I probably am a little skeptical and need more information to decide and may click on that option there. I don't have to choose that plan. I can choose whichever plan I'd like, so I can select a different one. But I also may want to rerun my answers when my wife gets home tomorrow, to be able to run through some different scenarios and see which one is ultimately going to be best. And then from there, Alex would continue the conversation around the tax savings related to the HSA, the other parts of the plan as well. And then when they get to the end, where they would get to enrollment.
Enrollment, sure. Hey, just so you know, you did skip over some benefits info, but you're the boss. Are you ready to enroll now? Great.
And so then...
I'm opening a page for you that has the link to where you'll enroll in your benefits and a list of what you told me you were interested in. I hope I've helped make this all a little easier to tackle. Come back anytime.
So then from here, especially since I'm not going to be making these decisions immediately, I do need to speak with my wife when she gets home. I probably am going to print out this page right here or save it on my desktop as a PDF. And as you see here, we haven't selected everything, but as we're going through the conversation, Alex is saving my choices. And at the very bottom, specifically has the enrollment information for open enrollment. If I was going through this as a new hire, it would be specific enrollment information relating to a new hire. And then at the top here, when I am ready to enroll, we'll either have this say open enrollment details or how to enroll. They will just click on this link here, which will open up a separate tab where they would then enter those elections to officially enroll. So then, fast-forwarding past open enrollment. Now we've passed open enrollment, where a couple of weeks later, I've actually made my choices. I have this HSA plan, maybe even made my first contribution into the HSA, but I have absolutely no idea how to use this tool. I don't know what I should be able to spend it on. Well, good news, luckily, the HR team here at the county has been working again with their Jelly Vision account manager to make sure that the employees are also going to be well-educated about these plans as well. They receive another, either a postcard or another piece of material or email around what can they actually pay for with the HSA. It takes them back into the Alex conversation, and it opens up this video that you see here, and we'll play this video.
Spending the money in your HSA, being a contestant on a game show.
(Singing) I'll give you your HSA!
But the rules are actually pretty simple. You can use the money in your HSA for medical, dental, or vision expenses. That includes x-rays, root canals, acupuncture, and even stuff like bus fare to the doctor. The term for stuff you can pay for with your HSA is qualified expenses. You can find the IRS list of all the qualified expenses online. If you're not sure if an expense is qualified, check the list. Examples: contact lens solution?
Qualified!
Allergy drugs?
Qualified!
Teeth whitening?
Qualified!
You can spend your HSA money on you, your spouse, or anyone you could claim as a tax dependent. They don't need to be covered by your medical plan. So, you, your spouse, and your kids?
Qualified!
Your elderly parents?
Qualified!
Parents dependents? Your former college roommate, Sydney?
Qualified!
Another thing, there's no waiting period. You can use your HSA to pay for any qualified expense that occurs after you open your HSA. And you have an unlimited amount of time to reimburse yourself if you pay for a qualified expense out of pocket. So you open your HSA, and one day later, you break your toe.
Qualified!
Then five years later, you find a receipt for that toe splint you paid cash for.
Qualified!
Reimburse yourself. But that laser eye surgery you got one day before you opened your HSA?
Oh!
Sorry!
My side is 20/20.
Just remember, if you're not sure about an expense, check the list. Because if you spend HSA money on a non-qualified expense, you'll need to pay taxes on that money.
Oh!
And you'll get hit with a penalty.
Oh!
So that's it. We'll see you next time.
(Singing) I'll give you your HSA!
Wow, you really love HSAs.
Thank you all very much for your time, and we'll now open it up to the floor for questions.
Thank you. Brian, any questions for Brian?
Brian, so if you... If an employee does not have medical insurance because their spouse has it under their job, the employee can still go on to the retirement section and all that stuff?
Yes, yeah, it speaks to every single part. You can use the conversation however you need to, based on your situation.
Any other questions? Any questions from staff? You all are real quiet today. Well, I guess we got the two Bryans, so we'll let you go.
Great. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, Sheena.
You're going to podium?
Okay. Next, we'd kind of like to discuss the situation with EMS and OMD. And let me give you just a little bit of background, and I think most of you know this already, but just for the rest of the room. Scott Hadley retired almost a year ago now, last September. And when Scott left, the prior county manager wanted to review a physician-led model of managing EMS. So he instructed Rusty and Dr. Gallagher to review and do research on that model. And at the same time, simultaneously, we named Dennis Mock as the interim director. So through the rest of that year, with Dennis running the organization, I personally felt very comfortable that he was going to do a good job, and he has. I'm going to thank him for that. And then we had our own issues at the county from October, November, December, to where really there was not a lot of county business getting done. And this project, this research, kind of languished for three or four months, and that is not anyone's fault, it just was the reality of the situation. So after the spin of the year, and Rusty will go into this, he began to give this assignment due diligence and had several meetings, went through several stages, which he's going to talk about. And we've reached the conclusion, after much research, much discussion, much analysis, that physician-led model is, has a lot to offer for the organization, has a lot to offer for EMS. So I want Rusty to kind of talk through that. Dr. Gallagher has an appointment at 10:00, but I would like him to get up before he leaves and just kind of talk about what he sees as benefits for this type of model and what the future may hold. And then as the old sage in the room, I'd like Dennis to kind of talk about how he has seen this industry change and why this migration to this model, though it's going to be challenging and is going to be met with some trepidation from EMS, has some positives. So with that, I'll pass the mic to Rusty and John. I'd have to ask that you'll get up to the podium.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. So as Tom said, after Scott had announced that he intended to retire, there was conversation around the need, it was an opportunity, director's leaving, we should look at the organization and see if there are changes that need to be made, and specifically to look at the possibility of collapsing the two into a single department. We have a well-qualified medical director, we have a well-qualified EMS staff, they work toward similar missions. Sometimes the vision and culture is not always aligned as well as we would hope, and so there was a request to at least look at this possibility. Early on, I had a couple of conversations with Scott before he left, fairly low-level about this, just getting his feedback on his perspective. And I had some other low-level conversations with other leaders in EMS. I talked to Dennis at a very basic level and Dave Johnston. I also talked to the two colonels over at OMD to kind of get their perspective, and had some of those low-level conversations. And then as Tom said, we kind of stalled. We talked about whether just to open up the director position and move on. And then in November of '18, we came to commission, just to have a conversation to see if, if commission was opposed to us spending more time on this, then we would drop it. If commission was open to allowing us to research this a little further, then we would delve deeper into it. At that time, commission generally were okay with the idea of exploring this further. They didn't have any preference one way or the other, but they were okay with us looking into it. And it kind of asked that, since elections had occurred and a new commission was going to be seated, that we kind of pulled off a little bit before we made any final decisions. So, and again, other things were going on, so we kind of put this on hold. Around the first of the year, we got back to it, and I met with some of our system partners, the hospitals, Wesley Healthcare and Ascension. I met with their leadership to kind of see where they viewed EMS from their perspective and the medical director's office and how they thought things were working. I talked to some of our partners over at the city side to kind of get their perspective as well. And then that was in January. In early February, we started to have focus group meetings with EMS. Over the course of two days in February, we met with everybody from EMT up through the major level, the division leader level. And those meetings were open to any and all who could come. We tried to arrange those to align with their shifts, so that, again, it would be easy for them to come, had them on different days to accommodate the different shifts. We received information there, and I did have an opportunity to discuss this a little bit further with one of the other colonels at EMS, and kind of talked about the result of those first conversations with staff, with Dennis and Dave Johnston and John Gallagher collectively, to kind of talk through what was being said about the challenges and issues with EMS in those first focus group meetings. I went to Wake County, North Carolina, to look at their system, which is a physician-led, and to talk to some of their staff to understand how they got there, why they got there, how things were working. And then we came back, and in June, we continued to have meetings with EMS staff to ensure that we were giving all of them the opportunity to have their voice heard. Again, we had open meetings scheduled on two different days to accommodate shifts. And then finally, in July, we had a third round of focus group meetings. These were small group. We randomly selected a small group of frontline paramedics and a small group of frontline And we did that random selection to try to ensure that we got different voices in those open meetings. Sometimes, specific individuals dominated the conversation and others remained silent. So we went through that focus group process. And then most recently, within a couple of weeks, we had another sit-down with a couple of captains, which are the frontline supervisors for EMS, so that they felt like they needed and wanted to talk to us one more time, so we sat down with them. So through all that process, we have definitely heard and understood the challenges, the concerns, the needs and the wants of staff at EMS. As we went into this, considering the possibility of restructuring, the mission of EMS is to provide quality out-of-hospital healthcare, and the vision of EMS is to make a measurable improvement in the health of the community. And EMS's mantra is that they are patient-focused, patient-centered, and patient-driven. So they are all about the medicine. We do understand that EMS has the 911 first response component, which is a very important and integral part of what they do. They are a transport service, and the way our system is set up, in most instances, a fire squad or a fire unit is going to be first response on medical, to get there, evaluate a patient, and maybe start stabilization before an ambulance arrives if a transport is needed. So the logistics in managing that response portion is different than medicine, but it needs to be integrated. The administrative and the operations need to be integrated with... The administrative and the operations need to be integrated with the healthcare, the patient care aspect of EMS. EMS and OMD share those missions and values. But again, as I said, there are times that the physician, as a very active and engaged physician, looking at best practices in clinical medicine and in EMS, has ideas of what he or she thinks should happen. And sometimes EMS administration, working from that EMS world, doesn't have the same vision. And so through integration, having talked to other physicians who were in those director-level positions for EMS, a lot of those things come through, and moving to that model for them helped resolve some of those issues, helped align vision, helped align culture, and got everybody moving in the same direction for the sake of patients. Here, we have the opportunity to structurally reorganize and integrate the two, use the best of both, the talent from both, to do the best for our patients. Having that physician who is actively engaged and who is progressive and looking for what's best for our patients and what will work within our system and the resources, the financial resources we have available, is, is through different, through different literature research and different research that I've read, over and over again, it says that a system has trouble moving forward unless the medical director is a strong, proactive, and engaged director who helps make decisions at those high levels in EMS. Some of the things that we've seen recently toward that end, medical director working with partners, including 911, to help ensure that the emergency medical dispatching is reliable, the data that comes out of that is reliable, utilizing that data to work on the optimized deployment project with city fire and county fire, which ultimately reduced the number of fire units responding to medical. And then most recently, the ICT project, which is utilizing resources in a different way to help reduce the number of transports to serve patients in place, so that we don't have to take them somewhere else. If we can stabilize them and treat them in place, then we're not using an ambulance to transport, we're not using police and fire resources a lot of times. It's that type of innovation that EMS staff has people internally who have that type of creativity. The OMD does as well. And by combining the two, they can, they can better work together to vet those and employ the best strategies for our system. So with that, that's kind of a high-level overview. EMS has a 45-year history in Sedgwick County. They've gone through iterations in the past, and Dennis can speak to that himself. He's been around for a good portion of that period of time. And so this would be the next iteration, the next advancement in our care of patients in Sedgwick County. I'm confident that John Gallagher has the right skill set, and I am confident that the professionalism and the experience and knowledge of EMS, the two of those will complement each other and give us a great product in years to come. So with that, if you'd like to hear from John or if you have questions.
Morning, Dr. Gallagher.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. Very brief remarks, very high-level, won't take very long, but first, I want to recognize the senior leadership from county staff and also the commissioners for the, the level of detail and engagement and process that was done in this. I admit, when this first came to the table, it was a concept and a design that even I was not particularly familiar with. And so my own learning process of understanding how this works and applies in other cities has been really eye-opening and exciting, intimidating but exciting, for the possibilities of what it could be here. I also had the opportunity to visit the Wake County system, as well as have conversations with a couple of my peers from both Indianapolis and New Orleans, which also use this model. So very exciting potential on the future. So to speak to system design at, at a high level, obviously, a lot will need to be figured out as we understand and start developing where we're going and how to best utilize staff skills and expertise. But what, in collaboration with HR and senior leadership, we have been able to come up with a plan for the topmost tiers of what this would look like. And the idea is that to have the single combined director position, and under that, to have three branch directors. So in the field of EMS, anytime a major issue is brought before the group, we need to address it on three fronts. The clinical medicine needs to be sound and the right thing to do for patients. It needs to be operationally feasible, and it needs to be financially responsible. So regardless of what that issue is, when it comes before us, those voices need to be heard, because a no in any of those categories makes the concept the wrong thing to do for us. Something could be the best medicine out there and operationally easy to accomplish, but if it's not financially responsible, it's not something that we can appropriately do. Also, if something were going to save us a ton of money and easy to pull off but wasn't the right thing for patients, again, you need yeses across all three of them. So the idea is to create positions in the form of a deputy manager and associate medical director and a associate director over finance and support. So as a group of four, we would be able to sit down at the table, hear whatever issues come before us with those three voices, and then make a decision moving forward with collective voice. So what will happen in the organization below that remains to be seen and needs to be held in collaboration with the people involved, but that's the idea of what it looks like. Lastly, and before I pass off to Dennis, this is a big change. Like I said, this is exciting, but this is also intimidating. We talk about a lot of areas where change is hard, but I would suggest that the professionals in EMS are good at change. We live in a world of change. Medicine changes faster than many other fields out there, and so while this will not be an easy process, change is something that we do. And I'm confident that coming together as a team will weather this change, just as we have weathered change that's come before us. So I'll let Dennis speak to that, and then we'll take questions collectively.
There's a lot of concern and trepidation with everything that goes on. Everything can be a tough transition, I get that. I do want to say that I am fortunate to work with a group of people that are passionate about what they do, and in that passion of what they do, they're very good at what they do. I'm very proud of them, proud to be associated with them. As we move forward, as he said, there are a lot of changes to go on. There have been a lot of changes over the years. We used to be considered a part of public safety, and we still are. If you're hurt suddenly, we'll be there to help you. But we're also a part of healthcare, and those things have expanded over different things and different ways of doing things. So there's a whole different approach to what we do. We talk about recruitment and retention, and that's a problem clear across the board. We are going to have to have more training, we're going to have to have more education. The expectations on us as medical providers are becoming higher. I'm very confident in our people. As I say, I'm very fortunate to be able to work with these people who are so passionate and good at what they do. So I continue to look forward to it. Yes, there's been 44 years of change, there's no doubt about that. It's been fun.
Any questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Howell?
First, let me just start by saying I have the highest respect for our EMS paramedics and all of those involved in the EMS organization. I think they do a wonderful job. I've said this probably once or twice a year, every year I've been here, so I hope I, lest I repeat myself, I love them and they're, they're excellent in what they do, and they're, they're probably, in my opinion, probably, probably a better system than, than any place else I know of. And so I'd say they're the best in the nation. That's just my anecdotal opinion, but they are tremendous. And I also have great respect for our OMD. And Dr. Gallagher, you know, I've told you before, I'm a huge fan of yours, I think you do a great job. But I am, I'm aware now, I wasn't aware of this a year ago, I'm aware now, that there has been some conflict between OMD and EMS. It's been, hasn't ever been brought to Commissioner level to, to know this was going on, but one of the things that's been identified was a lack of training, effective training getting to the paramedics. I don't know why that happened, it doesn't really matter to me, the, the history of this, but I'd ask you right now, are we, are we solving that problem? Is training happening better today than it was, they say, a year ago? I don't know who to ask, it'd be Rusty or Dr. Gallagher or?
So through these meetings that we've had since February, one of the things that came out strongly was that EMS feels, that the care providers feel like the training that they are receiving is not meeting their needs, and that they would like to see an improvement in that area. Now, it goes back to during the recession, reductions in staff at EMS basically gutted and took away their training officers. There were management decisions back in 2015, 2016, where it was decided to utilize a couple of EMS physicians to supplement OMD for credentialing and for clinical care aspects of the medical director's office. And so there has been that feeling between, or from EMS, that the medical director's office took two positions that should have been utilized for their training. Again, that was a management decision that was made several years ago, and through this process, the intent is to rectify the training issue, to identify the best way to deliver the type of training that EMS practitioners need. There were management decisions made over the years that came out of these meetings where you have EMS staff members who teach at junior colleges, are qualified instructors, but management decisions were made within EMS not to utilize those folks or allow them to instruct. And I asked the question as to why they weren't allowed to instruct, and essentially, they couldn't answer the question. They didn't know. So what I can tell you is that this structural reorganization is intended to resolve and improve the training issue and ensure that we upgrade the training, the quality assurance and the quality improvement aspects of the two organizations collectively.
Generally speaking, I think, I think bringing organizations to, you want to say the word consolidate the two, that's a word we love to use now, it sounds like more efficiency and perhaps maybe better streamlined processes within the organization. That sounds really good, but I guess I would just say that whatever problem is, is languishing with the training issue, from my perspective as a Commissioner, I think out of all the things we have funded since I've been a Commissioner, we've, we've pumped more money into EMS than probably anything else since I've been here. Maybe, I can think of a couple of things that may be close to that, but I think EMS, we've invested in trying to, to give those, that organization the things that they've requested. So if they haven't had the things they've needed, I have not been aware of that, and I would love to know where we're short. And if that's a budget issue, I wish it would have been brought to us as a budget request, that we would have known this was the, the problem and the results of the not funding something that's needed. To me, there's two, there's more than one way to solve this problem, but I, I expect, no matter what happens with OMD and EMS structure, that this issue of training must be solved, regardless.
There are.
And then, by the way, it's impacted morale. I, I heard from, I hear from many of the folks in the EMS side especially, they're having some morale issues. And I appreciate the fact that they're, they're truly professionals, I don't see that in the way they, the way they respond and provide care to people, but internally, if they're struggling with morale issues, and it maybe relates to the fact that they don't feel like they're, you know, getting the training they need, or whatever the, whatever the issue is, those must be solved regardless of the structure issue. And I think the structure issue is, is a good discussion, and I'm not saying I do or don't support that, I think it's, it's certainly something we ought to be looking at, maybe for efficiency. But this can't be the only issue to solve whatever is going on. I think we have to be committed to solving this, no matter what happens with the structure. And, and if it's about money or train, you know, we need some training people, I'm, I'm committed to supporting whatever is necessary. I, I just haven't been aware that there's been something that's been requested that we haven't provided. And so we've allowed Director Hadley and, and Dr. Gallagher to bring us items, and I think we've been receptive to those requests over the years. And so we are where we are because of the leadership in both the organizations. And the fact that there's a languishing issue, to me, is very concerning. And I think, I think restructuring may solve it, but I don't know that it will for sure. I think we ought to be committed to solving this, and I'd like to see some change there before we start structurally changing this, because I don't, I don't know for sure that's going to be the solution to the problem. I, I would love to see commitment on both sides of the organization, saying, we're going to, we're going to lean forward, and we're going to work together, and we're going to solve this training and get the morale moving in the right direction, and then have a conversation about structure potentially independent of that. To me, that's where I would like to see as a Commissioner. Having said that, again, I, I'm a huge fan of everybody involved, and I understand there may be reasons to, to do this, maybe about efficiency, but if it's about solving the training and morale, and this is the solution, I don't know that this is necessarily the only solution. I think there are other things we ought to be looking at. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? Well, I'll just make one comment. This has been going on since Scott Hadley left, trying to make a decision on what we're doing. It's been going on actually too long, because I think that it's to the point where that we've got a lot of people, are sending a lot of emails and a lot of concerns and Facebook pages and everything else going on. At some point in time, we've got to make a decision, and we've got to move forward with that decision and find out how it works. Now is the time to make a decision and move forward. When, when a couple of the captains came in and asked me one day to talk with me, one of the questions I asked them, and remember, my background is military, and from my background, and when I was a captain, it made very, very little difference to me who the general was. It made a lot of difference to me who the major was, because that's who I worked for. So at this point in time, we need to pick that general, that person that's going to be in charge, and we need to move forward with a decision. As longer it languishes, the longer that this is going to drag out, the more people that are going to be concerned. I think right now, we need to say we're going to put Dr. Gallagher in as head, and we're going to move forward with that decision, and we're going to stand behind that decision, we're going to support that decision as a board. Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I, I guess for me, you know, yesterday, I had, after school, I was sitting with my daughters, and an ambulance came down the street. And I think as, as a citizen who lives in Sedgwick County, I'm more concerned when I call 911, if somebody's going to come to my door. And I think that's really what we, what we should be concerned with. I, I did meet with a lot of, of boots-on-the-ground folks, and I heard some concerns, and I, I want to say that those concerns were heard, but I have to second what you say, Chairman, we do have to move forward. Change is tough. You know, the one thing that I did hear was, Dr. Gallagher, you know, when you, when you, as a medical professional, I think there are leadership that comes with that. And now taking, you know, one sort of organization and merging it with another, you have a lot of people now you're in charge of. And so making sure you understand, how are you going to get those people on your, on your side? And I think that you can. And so I'm excited to move forward, because at the end of the day, I want an ambulance to come to my house if I call 911. So I think that we're moving in the right direction, and I hope that we can get on board, because the more we languish, the more everybody gets upset, and the more conversations we have, and we get absolutely nowhere. So I'm excited to move forward, I'm excited that when I call 911, EMS and a professional is going to be there. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I can make a final comment. So again, I appreciate Chairman Newcombs and Commissioner Cruz. First of all, just say that when you call 911, an ambulance is going to show up, and they're going to be excellent when they show up. We know that, we're doing that now. This isn't going to make that different, this is going to, we're going to continue doing that as a organization. I have no doubt that the people will continue to be served with excellence. Our paramedics are, are second to none. But having said that, again, my, my concern is, is that we're, we're, we think this is the, we've, we've identified a problem apparently, and we think this is the solution. But the people we're talking about today are already involved. And so I guess my wondering, I'm, I'm wondering, why are we not seeing solutions being placed today? I asked a question about, is it better today than it was a year ago? And the answer, I, what I heard was not really. We haven't, you know, Director Hadley hasn't been here for quite a long time now. So it's not about Director Hadley. Whatever is going on, we have got people involved that are great leaders, and whatever the issue is, we have to be solving this regardless of restructuring the organization. Again, the reason to restructure probably is because it's maybe more efficient, and it's nice to have someone who's a medical doctor, essentially, if you will, in charge of the, the medical, clinical, technical side of what's going on with our paramedics, and have that close connection. I think that's great. But that's really not the problem at the start of this discussion. What started this discussion, in my opinion, is the fact that training and morale has brought this to a head. And those two issues ought to be solved. And those two issues ought to be solved today. And I guess I'm, I'm not against the idea of restructuring, but I'd just like to put, in my opinion, restructuring is secondary to solving the problem, and whether or not Dr. Gallagher is the right person for that position is TBD. I have continued to be a consistent advocate for following process and trying to identify our senior staff for these positions. And I love Dr. Gallagher, don't get me wrong, but I think that this position is different than what Dr. Gallagher was hired for. And if we're going, if we're going to use this director position to be in charge of everybody, I'd like to see it opened up to everyone. Dr. Gallagher, I think you're highly qualified. I would assume that you would apply and likely be the person, but I think we ought to follow a process to let everyone have an opportunity to, to get our attention. And, and you are uniquely qualified. You're one of the very few in the country that has the credentials that you have. So, I would expect you'd be very highly regarded in that process, but I think we owe it to the process to, to allow anyone, anyone to, to get our attention and see what happens. So, thank you.
Okay.
Chairman, the point Commissioner Howell brought up, we did hear a lot about in the focus group meetings at all levels. I'd kind of like to have Sheena talk about organizationally, why we are doing what we're doing, where we're essentially merging two departments together, and you have one department director already there, and from her perspective on why we're not opening it.
From my perspective, merging the two departments, you have one director in place, and you want to integrate those services. He is in the position of, of holding the OMD classification, and we would be adding those responsibilities to his position in that integration. And that's why we feel like it's, it's best that he go ahead and step into that role and add those responsibilities.
Very good. Do any commissioners other than Commissioner Howell have a concern whatsoever about us moving forward at this point in time?
No.
Saying none, I think it's time that we move forward. I know change is hard, but it's time to rip this bandage off and make a decision. So, I think that right now, I've only heard one person on the commission have any negative comments about any of the issues involved. I think it's time for Rusty and the manager to work with Dr. Gallagher, with Sheena, and let's get something happening in EMS.
Very good, sir. Thank you for all the comments and questions. With that, we need to talk about MAPC. We have two positions expiring on 8/31, and we would like to, on 9/4, at the BOCC meeting, have a discussion about a new appointment and potentially a reappointment of the two. And let me just kind of step back. There's 14 positions on MAPC. Each commissioner gets an appointment, and each city council person gets an appointment, but because we have five instead of seven, there are two on the county side that are at-large, and those are the positions we are talking about here. One of the incumbent members wishes to resign from the board, and another, as far as I know, unless somebody can correct me, wants to stay retained on the board. So, the discussion at hand today is what to do with both of these positions, and depending on what your direction is here today, we'll craft the resolution for the 9/4 meeting. And I, Mike would like to get involved in this conversation too, but I guess if you want to take it from there.
Very good. Mr. Papoun, you have any comments?
The only comment I'd make, you mentioned one member wanting to resign. Actually, these two terms both ended at the end of this month, so we're ready to either reappoint or appoint a new member at this time anyway.
So, the question that I asked was how long are these terms? And I have discovered that our city partners do have term limits for their appointments, and I wonder why we don't follow suit with the appointments that the commission makes. I think that that could be something that we could explore as far as keeping in line. So, I believe that would be drafting a resolution that would state our appointments would have a two-term limit, or that's, is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner, as we did last January, I believe, it would take a joint city ordinance and county resolution to once again change some aspect of the term, terms for these members, and that would have to then be approved, not only by both governing bodies, but have to go in front of the Attorney General. It'd be a fairly routine matter, and of course, Justin Wagner handled that the last time, and it went through very smoothly, so.
I would like to comment on that. I personally understand the city has term limits, being a city council member, just like Commissioner Meister was, but they, they impose term limits on themselves, so I don't think we should be putting term limits on boards when we don't apply those to ourselves. I think that there'd be an inconsistency there personally. Second issue is, I just wanted to send greetings and regards from Don Klosmeyer, who has appreciated the, the faith that we had in him, the individual that the chair was, or that the campaign manager was mentioning, was Mr. Klosmeyer, and I think he's served very well, and he has some other commitments with his 10 kids, and there's a lot of grandkids that are now across the country that he wants to visit. So, I appreciated his willingness to serve. He's a great member of our community, so thank you.
Thank you. Let me comment on term limits, first of all. Couple things on term limits. First of all, the second, if it's like eight years reappointed, the second term, you're kind of a lame duck. But beside that, recently, we did make a change to the way that they're appointed, where the commissioner who district appoints them, that person expires upon someone else taking place, taking over, right?
Yes.
We have terms, Mr. Chairman, but we, we have changed the resolution to allow members that, these appointments serve at the pleasure of the, the appointing commissioner, and so they can always remove a member.
Correct. So, I think that that kind of solves some of the problems with terms. Now, the place that maybe I think we need to consider are the two at-large positions. We may want, is there a possibility we could place term limits on the two at-large and not on the five individual ones, because they're really at the, at the pleasure of the commissioner? Is that a possibility?
Yes, we can, and I may defer to Justin as well, but conceded the last change to the joint ordinance resolution, but I believe that change could be made.
I don't have a problem with having term limits on the two at-large, because those are decided by all five of us. I guess my appointee, as long as I'm happy with my appointee, I don't know why we'd need to change. And I think that's an individual commissioner's responsibility. If they feel that at a certain time they want to change, if they've been on eight or 10 years and it's time to change, why, that ought to be up to that individual commissioner. The, the at-large, I don't have a problem with having term limits on those. I don't know how you feel about that.
I could agree with that. I could agree with that.
Do we have any data as to the current tenure of our, of our appointments currently? I mean, has, has term limits changed anything significantly in terms of getting someone who's been there a very long time and moves them along? Is that, do we have data on how long these folks have been serving so far?
I don't have that, Commissioner. This might be more appropriate for Dale Miller to answer.
Part of, part of the answer to your question is that we've had commissioners who have been appointed by both sides of the street. So, for example, someone may have lost an election on the county side, who appointed someone, they want a new person. The sitting planning commissioner might be reappointed by someone on the city side, and then their service would continue. It's just who appointed them would be different. At this point, off the top of my head, I believe we have one commissioner that may be working on 20 years, having been appointed from both sides of the street off and on. But.
But has that, has that person served by their appointment for more than eight years?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So, their single appointment, they served for more than eight years?
Oh, a single appointment.
Other words, a, a commissioner or a city, or however this was done, an at-large appointment, whatever, someone has served for more than eight years. Other words, changing this to term limits, does it actually change anything?
Well, I don't know that I can answer that. All I'm saying is, they have, this one person that I'm thinking of has been on there close to 20 years, but I know he has been appointed by both sides of the street off and on. Whether or not he's been nine years, you know, based on one side of the street or the other, but all I can say is his contributions have been very valuable. That's the other key, is it is, from my perspective, it is somewhat difficult to find someone who has the background and who has the time, because if you're appointed to the subdivision committee, you have a Thursday afternoon or Thursday meeting every week, except for the four times during the year where there's a skip week. And then, if you're appointed to the advanced plans committee, they meet on an ad hoc basis, but generally, they meet at least once a month. And so, if you're on the subdivision committee, you're showing up for a planning commission meeting one week, a subdivision meeting the next week, then plan commission, then subdivision. And we have had issues with some appointees not showing up at subdivision, and we just recently had to change some of our stuff in order to try and address those folks, because legal staff had concerns that we didn't actually have a proper quorum to address Platts. And so, that's, I mean, there's practical aspects to this, that it's not just how long they've been there, it's, do they show up and do they know what they're doing?
So, I'd just say, I, I guess I'd like to have someone analyze whether or not having term limits would actually change anything that's been happening. Has someone served for more than eight years by, by a single appointment, whether it be, since the city has term limits on the county side?
I just, I can think of at least two people who have served on the city side, because I don't know about the county side, but the argument that we've always been using is, once on the city side, the term limit is up, they continue to serve until they're replaced. So, I know two people whose terms expired, the council person wanted them to continue, and so they just did not replace them.
Thank you. It's the same game that's played with the airport board that the city imposed term limits, and that is the Wichita Airport. They allow us to put members on, and I've had people, and I think Commissioner Meister has too, that have just switched the appointment. So, my current appointee, he expired at the city, and then Commissioner Norton's appointee expired at the county, and then we just switched places. So, Jeff Lueblon, I just literally switched the members. But I think this would, this term limit would affect Commissioner Duhl, wouldn't, hasn't he served two terms? This would be his third. So, so that's what concerns me, and, and I believe he has support from this commission, or, I mean, the, not the commission, the, the planning department. We got the, the emails, so it would kick Bob Duhl off, and I don't think we have desire to do that, because from everything I've heard, he's a good commissioner. So, thank you.
So, my desire is just to have this conversation. So, I appreciate Mr. Manager for allowing us to have this conversation in an open meeting. I don't know that it's ever happened like this before, forgive me if I'm wrong, but I'm glad that we're having it today, because I think it's important for the public to understand how these boards get their appointees. I think that it's kind of confusing. I think that there's a lot of things that happen, maybe behind a closed door, that maybe shouldn't, and I'm glad, because this board shapes our city. It shapes our county. And I just want to say that I'm glad we're having this conversation, and I hope that we continue this conversation, because it's really important to the future of our county.
That's it. Back to the task at hand with the two positions. I think we can do further research on term limits and maybe get you information in the future on that, but for the immediate future with the two positions.
I don't have a problem with reappointing Bob Duhl. I've known him for an awful long time, and I served with him on the MAPC, and he, just as Dale said, he does a tremendous job on the MAPC. As Dale said, that, it requires a lot of time and effort on your part. I was on both subdivision and advanced plans, so I served on both of those subcommittees besides the MAPC. And the hours that you put in researching, reading all the documents ahead of time, listening to the testimony, I drove by I don't know how many pieces of property, so I'd know what I was looking at when it came before me, so that I could make the right decision. It, it takes someone that is really dedicated, and the pay is zero. You get no pay whatsoever. So, it's, it's something that you have to have a passion for, and I appreciate the fact that Bob Duhl does have that passion. The folks that I served with on, on the MAPC over the years were fantastic, and they were public servants in the true sense of the word, that they weren't asking for anything back whatsoever, that they were there for service. So, I would like to recommend that we retain Bob Duhl for the, one of the at-large positions. Is there any objections to us putting that on an agenda?
And just to be clear, I have nothing against Bob Duhl. I don't even know the guy. I'm just saying, as, as a conversation in general, I think that's, that's something that I just wanted to talk about. So, I appreciate the opportunity to do so. Again, I have nothing against him. I don't even know him, so I'm glad that he's doing a great job. But just, there's a lot of people in this community that could do a good job as well, and I know how hard it is, because I've been checking, I've been asking people, and nobody can do it. So, I get it. Yeah, so I, I really am appreciative of the folks who do serve and give their time. But again, I just wanted to make sure that we all understand that, how this is done, and I'm glad that we had the, the conversation today.
That solves one of the problems. If we talk about Bob Duhl, we do have a second position that we need to talk about and what we want to put on our agenda for replacement of Don Klosmeyer. And again, I've known Don for a long time. I, I served with him off and on. He was on and off the MAPC several times, and most recently, what was it, eight, 10 months ago, we asked him to come back on there, because we had an opening, and he agreed to come back on for a period of time. I echo Commissioner O'Donnell's comments that he has done a tremendous job the entire time that I ever served with him, and I appreciate the fact that he did come on to fulfill the unexpired term. So, we do have now a second position to, to fill on that. I've heard a number of names come up. I know that we have one of the names in the audience today, I believe, so I don't know if, he's the only one that I see in the audience today. But I don't know if we need to open it up for other discussions, or just state who we'd like to have.
I'll comment on that. When Mr. Klosmeyer called me, it was sometime in July, that requested that he not be retained and wanted to resign, he had suggested that we appoint Hugh Nix, and so, he said he had spoken to Mr. Nix, and Mr. Nix wanted to do it. I made a phone call to Mr. Nix to make sure that was correct, and then I encouraged Mr. Nix to call the chairman and let him know, and also Mr. Galligan at the Builders Association. So, I think he did that. I've known Hugh for a little over a year. He was actually, I believe, slated to take the position that Mr. Klosmeyer has currently, and because of political reasons, decided not to pursue that, wait through an election cycle, and now I think he's willing to serve that whole term. I have full faith and confidence that he would do a great job, but like Commissioner Cruz said, there's lots of people in this community that can do a great job, and not to diminish that or be reductive. But personally, I had told Mr. Nix after we talked that I would be supportive of him.
And as Commissioner O'Donnell said, Hugh did give me a call and stated his appreciation for being considered, and that he would like to be considered for that position. He's the only person that has called me and asked to serve on the MAPC, and I have no objections to Hugh Nix being our second nominee.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. So, I have, so I have nothing against Hugh Nix. I think he's a, is a fine person, but I don't really know him, and I don't know what his credentials are in terms of his expertise and how it might relate to MAPC. I know some part of his resume, I know he just recently ran for one of the seats here on the commission, so I know a little bit about him that, in that regard, but I don't know what his credentials are in terms of how he would, how he would be on MAPC. I, I'm personally in favor of Dennis Clary. He's sitting over here. Couple reasons why. He's, he's been very involved in the young professionals of Wichita. He's had a very active career. He's a government affairs for Realtors. And one question came up, I'd like to ask possibly Justin, if he's available, to answer a question. Is there any perceived conflict of interest from someone who was, who'd be serving in a realtor's? Is there any perceived conflict of interest from someone who would be serving in a Realtors' government affairs position? Is there a constant conflict of interest in terms of him having to recuse himself on issues that might come before MAPC? Or is that, how do you interpret that, I guess?
Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. Commissioner Howell, on your question. I don't think there's a general conflict of interest or requirement that there'd be abstention on the part of somebody who'd serve in that role. I mean, obviously, there may be certain matters that that person would have to abstain from, whether it be they have a financial interest or if they're, for example, trying to sell the property or closing the property that's going through the zoning action. But other than that, I wouldn't have any additional concerns.
Well, I've asked him, I met with him and I asked him a number of questions. And I really am impressed with his perspective. I think he's, has good connection to many people in this community. He's very active in many organizations. He's got the Realtors' perspective perhaps, and I think that's paramount. There's a lot of other people on the commission that have Realtors' backgrounds or architectural backgrounds or builders' backgrounds. So to me, that's a really, really great connection. And so I guess if this is Commissioner-led, and I appreciate the recommendations of the builders and things like that. I actually thought of another guy that happens to be in my district. And I might, I might still ask him to serve in the future. His name is Don Folger, which I understand designed and built the Waba building. And he's a great choice, I think. But that's my choice in the future, potentially, if there's another position open and I get the chance to nominate him. He can't do it today. He's not able to do that today. So that's why I'm passing over Don Folger at the moment. But maybe in the future, he'd be a very good appointment. But if this is Commissioner-led, I guess I'm just really impressed with Dennis Clary. And again, no, I'm not, I'm not against Hugh Nix. But I think Dennis Clary has all the things I want someone in that position to have. And I think he'd be a very good appointment. So I just, I'd like to advocate for him.
Any other comments?
I have to say that I was not, Hugh is in my district. He actually serves on my citizens advisory board. And he did not approach me. I have talked with Dennis. So I also am as supportive of Dennis. That would be my, I guess, again, going back to talking from a commission standpoint and how these positions are selected. I think as five commissioners, it's appropriate, we all kind of voice our opinions. And I would have to say that is mine.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, he does live in your district, by the way. Just to throw that out there. I asked him where he lives. He lives in your district. Not that it matters.
But can I say one final thing? Sorry, Pete. I mean, that being said, now that we're having this open conversation, if somebody else, I mean, we don't have to make this decision today, do we?
You do not.
I mean, that's what I'm trying to say. When, when these conversations are had in public, somebody might think or do research or maybe think that they couldn't serve on this before, that might think they would be a good fit now. And I would be open to have that conversation. Because the one thing that I think that we need to do is make sure that we give an opportunity to everyone who lives in this community. And it's important that now that we are having this out in the open, you voice your, you voice your interest. I think that that's what we need to do. I would be open to talking to you if you have an interest in this. So please give me a call. I think that's, that's the point in having this open discussion. It's not me picking him or him picking him or something of that nature. I think, I think that that's what we need to do. And that's why I'm glad we're having this conversation again.
Actually, I have one other comment I was going to make. One thing, there's something about personality that really kind of appeals to me. And that's when someone has a very analytical, logical, that's just my nature. And I think you all know that about me. Dennis is an engineer by trade. He's a mechanical engineer, was working at Boeing for years until they left him. And he's stayed in this community, built up his business, and he's committed to Wichita. But having, having the knowledge that he was a mechanical engineer at Boeing, to me, just really is a great history. And I think that's a good perspective for someone who has to look at things analytically and look at things, you know, what is, what's right, what's fair, what's good. I think he's got the perspective. Again, nothing against Hugh. I just don't know him. And I know he was a teacher, I believe, things like that. So, you know, it's not about, it's not against Hugh. I just think that for someone that has an engineering background, I think is an excellent choice for someone on that board. So once again, thank you.
Very good. Go ahead, Pete.
I just want to say that, that I've been around this process a little bit. First time that I've, in appointing a board, that we've had a workshop or a staff meeting about a board appointment. But I really value what you've been saying about the time commitment. And I experienced that firsthand when I was at the city. And one of my appointments would have been, was great. And then about two months into it, he says, he goes, this is way too much time. I can't do it. And then I did another one, another time that ended up, actually, it was Bob Dool one time. And then he had to leave for, then he had to quit for, I think, a spouse medical or some, some reason temporarily. And so he quit. So, so this is no, this is no small, small job, as been said by many. And so I would, I'm a little concerned. Maybe I could visit with Mr. Clary. I really am concerned, knowing this community, about representing commercial development and commercial, it's, I mean, it was a great question about conflict interest. It may not be officially a conflict interest, but I'm not sure that you want to be on the other side of a lot of phone calls. We have some incredibly aggressive commercial developments, developers in this community. And even ones that come in from outside the community. I've been around that a lot. So for you to be in a meeting and on a development, on a zoning issue with, with that is, that makes me question. And then, and then Hugh, I know Hugh fairly well too. I think the background and the vetting that he did about looking into this job was, was the realization of what it, what it would take. And again, he's, not that age matters, he's not a spring chicken, but he's probably not going to be there 40 years or anything like that. We probably don't have to worry about term limits with Hugh, that's for sure. So, anyway, so I, if we can, if we want to delay this, I just don't want to, I don't want you to have the quorum problems, Dale, that you have on various things. So if we wanted to bring both of them in front of us at the next meeting, and then we can just decide what we want to do. Want to do that?
Chairman, Wes has been here from the beginning. He had to go through OMD EMS with us. So, and I know he wanted to get up and say a few words. So in the spirit of conversation, is it okay if we let him have a few minutes?
All right, Wes, welcome.
First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. Secondly, I think it's a good opportunity for the public to understand that you all are concerned about who gets appointed to boards and commissions because they touch the life of citizens every day in one form or another. So it's a good thing. We take care in trying to find candidates that will serve on boards and commissions. They're all important. There is none more important than the planning commission. Everything they do when applicants come before them are the development of comprehensive plan or an amendment to the comprehensive plan, or looking at a zoning code, or modifying a zoning code, or developing a parallel zoning code, which we'll be doing pretty soon. And all those types of things take a lot of time. It takes people with, I think, a lot of experience to sit in judgment, so to speak, of what's appropriate for this community. And some are better at that than others. Some kid themselves and think that they can do that. When they find out later they can't, they leave. And Pete, you mentioned that. And time is an essential component in terms of the commitment they're willing to make to serve in this capacity. I would just say this, that when we look at at-large appointees for the county, all of them for that matter, which, for the city and the county, we're interested in knowing what the person is like, how much experience they have had, the variety of experiences they have had, what's their education and business background? How do they see things philosophically and look at things philosophically? So it's, it's, it's good that people are willing to serve. It's more important they're willing to serve and can make the time commitment and do the job as it's expected to be done. I know Hugh Nix. I did not know him until he ran for election. He is not planning to do that again. But he is willing to serve in the capacity of a planning commissioner. The reason we like Hugh, and I don't dislike Dennis or anything like that. I think he's a fine young man. And I think, I appreciate the fact that he's interested. But the reason I think that we have stepped forward to recommend Hugh and support him is the fact that he has a variety of experiences in his life. He grew up in a farm community. His father was a farmer. He's been farmer himself, involved in the ag community. He's lived in a small city most of his life, mays in the same house for 40 years. He's worked at, after he got out of college, for the Chamber of Commerce for a time. Left there, joined a, an investment company. Found out that that was not what his future would, would hold for him. He just didn't like it that well, didn't feel he was cut out for it. And then later, he went to work for the Saznak organization. That's Kansas spelled backwards for you that don't know. That is the Carlos O'Kelly Group, the Roth family. And so he worked for them for 23 years and was involved in strategic planning of the business promotion, advertising, modifications, research, all that sort of thing. So he has the background. He also has the temperament that I think is important to serve as a commissioner. He's not motivated because of any desire to move the commission this way or that way or tell people what they ought to think or ought to agree to when they come before them. He understands the parameters he would be working within. And I think at this point in time, we would be hard pressed to find anyone better qualified and has the level of time and commitment to give. And if he says he'll do it, he'll do it. You can bank on it. So he would be the one, he is the one that we are supporting. I know Don Folger well. Worked with him numerous times. I know a number of these individuals. But most of the time, what I find out is when they have a conversation and find out how much time it takes, most of them say, I just can't give that kind of time. So that's where we end up. So we would appreciate your support for him.
Thank you, Wes. I guess as we wrap this up for today, we're going to set the agenda for the following week, next Friday.
That's correct, August 30th, sir.
And so I don't know that we want to be sitting up on the bench and come up and start trying to advocate for one or the other. Because I never want to ever, ever say anything bad about somebody that we're trying to talk into volunteering that much time. So I would never want to come up with any negative comments about anybody. So as we, if we're going to try and do it from the bench, I think it's going to be very difficult. I think we need to have a decision on who we're going to put on that agenda before next Friday. And I don't know how we're going to get there.
Sir, let me suggest that we focus on Mr. Nix and Mr. Clary and come up with a resume or biography of each of those individuals and any other player that would come forward and want to be considered and get that information to all of you. I will talk with Mike about the best steps forward. We are sensitive to open meetings. We want to make sure we do things publicly and transparently. It might be a situation where you have all the resumes and all the information, but we come back to the open board meeting on nine and four and we take nominations and we, and we have a vote. I would say that any other player to come forward, 8:30, August 30th would be the drop dead date that we would have to have that information so we can prepare the agenda item. And Mike could have, if it's simply two, we could craft resolutions with both names in it, depending on the way the commission votes, and be ready to go on nine, four. So let me get you more information about specifically these two candidates, since we talked mostly about them, and anybody else that any commissioner wishes to bring forward.
Okay. Anything that we say in public, I want to be positive on every individual. I never want to say anything negative about anyone. They are going to serve us in other ways, whether they're selected or not. And we need to make sure that we let them know how proud we are of what they're doing and that we appreciate their volunteering to serve us.
Sir, it's 10:25 this morning. We, I have about a 10 or 15 minute call out on this, on the groundwater issue. If we could cover that today, all the staff, I think, is here today. Or we can defer that to next week. Your guys just call.
I think probably the press is standing back there all this time waiting for groundwater. Isn't that right?
Way we go.
I would hate to have them sit through all of this and then cover us.
Very good. On June 26th, I put an email out and we had four, identified four action steps based on the dialogue that the commission had had during open meetings. And I'll just, we'll take them one at a time. David, we'll start with ditch maintenance. One of the concerns brought up by citizens and one of the concerns discussed by the commission was the ditches around the Salem Township area. So could you, could you talk about that?
Well, first of all, I'll make a few introductory remarks. But I want to thank Commissioner Howell for admitting a while ago that engineers are his favorite people. That was great. We appreciate that, that a public works.
He can pay me later.
We have the complete brain trust here today on stormwater and groundwater. And Susan Earlwin is here, Jim Weber's here, Scott Lindaback's here. And he's going to give a little PowerPoint and answer all. The manager sent out an email about what he wanted to talk about today. So just a couple in general, I want to tell you that back in 1999, PEC did a study. And Scott will give more detail on this. And we have solutions for stormwater down there in that area of Hillside and Hundred and Third, around that entire vicinity. What we don't have is money and funding to do those solutions. But we've known for 20 years what, what we can do to solve some of these problems. So without further ado, I'll ask Scott to go ahead with the PowerPoint and then we'll open up, and this will cover, Mr. Manager, all of your points on your email.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Basically, about 20 years ago, not only the groundwater issue that was, that was going on, but also surface water issues that we're, that we're having in Southern Cedric County, identified and read all the problem areas that we had surface water issues. And over on the western side, it's called the West Basin. That was the highest concentration of surface water problems. Like David said, in 2000, 2001, PEC completed the study. And they recommended nine projects in the West Basin. The highest concentration of areas was in North Waco Watershed, which is four square miles, and the South Waco Watershed, which is 5.4 square miles. Now, this is the largest tributary to the Cowskin Creek, south of the flood control project. So it's a fairly large area. And the water, the ground is very, very flat. And a lot of the Waco slough has been farmed out. And so the water just doesn't really percolate and travel in a normal channel like you'd expect. It ends up taking the county roads and the township roads to get to the county border at 119th Street. This is a map of the, of the west sub-basins. And it's the very eastern area that's the worst, which is the Waco. And it begins about 71st Street South. And it travels all the way down to 119th, generally between Oliver and Hydraulic. Some of the three projects they recommended for the North Waco Watershed area, and that was Improvement K. And in the old CIP, it was listed as D12. And it was construction of detention ponds and stormwater pump stations that would end up collecting surface water runoff and then taking it to the Arkansas River to the east. Another project was an improvement channel at 87th and Bluff that the township would end up maintaining. And it would also take the runoff to the Arkansas River. Then also, there was a, since a lot of the Waco slough has been farmed out and there isn't a channel to speak of, they wanted to construct a north-south channel along an old abandoned railroad. I can't remember the name of the railroad, but it was, it's kind of like, in line with where Spruce is, just north of 95th. This is a map of all the improvements. The little blue blotches are where the ponds, detention ponds were anticipated. And Improvement M is a long, long north-south channel that they had recommended. There is another channel, Channel R, that goes from north of 95th all the way to the county line that was, that was recommended. The cost estimates for the Waco slough watersheds, the preliminary costs that were done in 2000, estimated right away needed a six, basically a section of, a full section of land of 600. land of 640 acres. And they estimated about $14 million. And the cost benefit analysis showed that the improvements outweighed the costs. Some further refinement of those numbers, depending on the size of detention ponds that were going to be put in, if you wanted one that could handle the 10-year storm, which it seems like we have one of those about every two or three years, would be $8.9 million for the north one. If we wanted to go through the, to the 100-year event level, that was going to be over $10 million for both the Waco North and the Waco South. The channel on 87th Street that Salem would have to choose, that was only going to be about $3,000 of annual maintenance to, to take care of that. But the improvement along the old Waco slough was about $1 million to do that channel that was identified. And it would consist of between 40 and 50-foot wide channels. And then, then this is Improvement D-11 or Improvement S. That was partially built in 2001 and 2002 at a county cost of almost $1 million, but it did not include all the channel work. And we had a number of people that came and talked to me and said, hey, we need better ditches along the Bluff, north of, south of 95th and north of 103rd. Well, if that project was completely taken care of, that would have gotten the water to this 48-inch storm sewer that drains out to the river at 103rd and Bluff. But at the time, they just didn't have the budget to acquire all the additional right-of-way. Overall, the, all these projects have been identified in the business plan for the Stormwater Management Advisory Board. Currently, we're just waiting on funding. We, we know what needs to be done and we have a lot of engineers in this community that have studied this fairly comprehensively. Of the four priority projects, one and a half of them have been completed in the last 20 years. There's five secondary projects that have not been funded and there's three longer-term projects. One of those longer-term projects was to do a Cow Skin diversion channel, but stream maintenance has done a lot of the ditch cleaning from the county line all the way up to Hayesville. And so that was one project that has been, that don't, I don't think that's no longer necessary just because of the, the cleaning of the channel has actually worked and is doing a good, good job. But current steps that what we're doing right now is we've had a lot of complaints on Hillside. It's been paved over the last five years and a lot of people are now using that to get, as an alternate route to get to the casino. And when it rains, there were adequate ditches to, when we built the paved road, we couldn't do a lot of ditch work because we only had 25-foot half right-of-way and we didn't have access to, to do more. And so we are going through the process of evaluating for that whole mile, what right-of-way is necessary. And we're, we're looking at actually acquiring some right-of-way because standing water after a mi, after a two-inch rain on the road is a safety hazard and we need to, we need to correct that. And so that's what we're going to make. And this is a picture I think Commissioner O'Donnell sent to David just recently from constituent, and we recognize that's an issue and it has to be addressed. Just, just a little history, the first CIP drainage project was D-1, was done in 2001. It handled a big drainage issue at 87th on Hydraulic in this area and it ended up constructing a 24-inch storm sewer that drains about two miles to the Cow Skin Creek. So, and that was a project cost of about a half a million dollars. But so there has been a history of the commission in the past doing some of these drainage projects and, and it's just, just how much more we want to do. So, oh, that was it.
Question for Scott.
Scott, and maybe David, you can, so going back to your last slide, history. So about, about seven, eight years ago, I know Jeff Longwell was really involved in the Cow Skin, up, maybe on the west side draining issues that we had. And even had to try to do a reverse drainage to go, had to go north instead of south or whatever it was. I was just learning. But there was a lot of effort at the time to get, to work with the feds to get approvals. That, was that, am I memory right on that?
That, that's correct, yeah.
And did the feds help fund that too? I think they did.
The feds were willing to fund a portion of it, but they, they ended up saying that the, the project was too big at the time. The project was too big for them to deal with. That was the Dry Creek Detention Project out there near 167th and 13th. But I think today if that project was presented to them, we could probably get the feds to pay 75% of it, but it's with, with the Corps of Engineers. But it was, that was, that was probably a $20 million project. So the, the locals, you know, the city of Wichita and the county would have to come up with probably two and a half million dollars apiece to fund that project. So that's, that's, that's another, that's another issue. That's Dave Dennis's area.
Okay. But I know, but a local, a local match on a $20 million project could be only $2 million or something, two or three million?
Well, yeah, that's it, if the city of Wichita would support that as well.
Okay. All right. So I'm just wanting to get a perspective.
Yeah.
So based on what's happened this year regionally, I've also heard that there might be some, a new federal program for the stormwater surging flooding. Some of the communities had big problems, you know, Omaha and whatever, they had major problems. So i, if, if a, if a Fed program is released for that, are we prepared to do, to be, do an application on that in cooperation with the state and, and the city even? We are? Okay, we're ready. So our lobbyist, we need to make sure that that's high on his list.
We keep saying Wichita too. I'm not so sure Derby shouldn't be involved in some of this as well.
Again, David Spears, you know, the other thing that ties into this is the Northwest Expressway. When that's, that's designed and we figured that the dirt to come out of this detention pond that we're talking about here would help build that. And we had a lot of meetings with KDOT over that. We, so that can tie into that also and be a win-win situation possibly. And we're, we're looking at a lot of different angles to get federal funding.
Engineers were time-challenged. That was their five minutes. So just a couple, three other issues that we had talked about, this we'll cover very briefly. Mark, do you want to talk about appraisal? We had talked about the concept of reducing some of the valuations on these homes involved. Do you want to give them an update on that?
Commissioners, the groundwater event occurred after January 1. Our appraisal date is January 1. Therefore, we can't legally change that 2019 value. However, we can take it into consideration for 2020 value. Talking with the state and so forth, they are pretty adamant about that and they will be watching our office very, very diligently to make sure that we toe the line there. As far as the property tax abatement program, you know, the United Way 211 phone number was utilized, people called in. The tax abatement program basically has 50% damage threshold. None of those people would qualify that called in. However, I haven't received any new applications. But at the event that we had several nights ago down in Hayesville, we did do a survey and about 40 of those surveys were handed out. We haven't received any back in paper. However, we do have one that went to the website and we do have some phone calls. So we are out looking and we are talking and we're visiting people. So that's my report. Any questions?
Thank you.
And then, first, a couple of special projects, Dallas, Dale and Mike with Justin. Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor, and I'll look to Susan Erlinwine or Jim Weber to correct me if I'm getting any of this wrong. But we, approximately two weeks ago finalized a contract with PEC where they would be going in, seeing about the feasibility of a potential de-watering project in terms of how all the water hydrology would work and where the water would go. And then also come up with a cost estimate. That cost estimate obviously becomes very important for the property owners in the area who may be part of the de-watering project. As we talked about, a potential for a benefit district and improvement district to build and maintain any de-watering project that would be placed there. And so I think at this point, I think they're probably still, what, four or six weeks away from coming up with preliminary?
It's like 60 days.
60 days, okay. So about two months away. So that's, that's pretty early in the process. And really, those property owners are going to want to know a cost estimate before they start moving forward with any petitions for benefit districts running along those lines. Happy to stand for any questions on that.
I have a question. So when we, when we talk about de-watering, are we talking about just getting the wa, are we talking groundwater that we're getting out and we're releasing it down the river? Or are we talking about harnessing it if it's drinkable water, if it's usable water?
I'll take a, Jimmy, you want to talk about it or?
Yeah. Okay, the projects that we're looking at are what the state would consider to be actually de-watering. The only purpose is to get the water out and to a place that doesn't hurt anybody else. There are conversations always going on about how to beneficially use that water. That could be a little complicated because that turns it from a de-watering permit to what's your, getting maybe a permanent water right, which may all be able to be done, but it just, it's a pretty, it's more complicated than what we're talking about with Hancock Acres right now, which is how can we get it in a controlled way out of their basements and into the river?
Other questions?
I appreciate the conversation on the ditches. I think that's a very, very important thing that we're going to continue to work on, I assume. And Hillside, that water, that puddle of water is excellent, project to be identified, that's excellent. I'm glad to know about the, the special project that's developing. My, I have a persistent question that keeps coming up, being down south. I have people ask me the question frequently. If, and again, this is Derby's decision, but if Derby or another municipality was to somehow decide to turn those 11 wells back on and use it as a water source, of course it would require treatment. Okay, so that's, that's, it's a caveat. But if that was to happen, question, question remains, does that solve any of the water table issues? Does it actually lower the water table? Do we have that data? Someone at the meeting in, in Hayesville mentioned they had that data. I, I don't know who has it and, and how the water table is impacted by the 11 water wells. If, if you lower the water table back, back to maybe the way it was because we're actually using those 700 million gallons a month as a water supply? Again, it wouldn't, it wouldn't solve, it wouldn't solve all the water needs of any, of Derby, for example, it wouldn't solve all the water needs. They would have to have other water as well. But 700 million gallons a month is what they've been allotted, I understand, and, and that's enough water that I'm wondering how that would impact the water table? And should that be part of our conversation?
Looking at the studies that have been done down there, not only pump studies, but data on the aquifer and the permeability of the aquifer. Dr. Swindle had presented at the meeting using mathematics and Darcy's Law for that, that the best, that the closest wells to this area could draw down would be up to 1/10 of a mile. And that was drawing the water table down to zero. So it really should, it could, will draw down the water table around Derby within a halo of those wells, but it's not going to reach two miles away.
Okay. I guess I'd like to, I'd like to see that data if it's possible, if we can get that gathered up. It'd be nice to see the impact that the 11 water wells has on the, on the water table and how far away. Again, we're talking about a month or two pumping, we're talking about using that water every month, 700 million gallons a month.
Right.
Okay. I'd like to see that data because that, that question needs to be answered because I continue to get that question all the time, so.
And then while Susan got the microphone, the fourth component was the public meeting, which she emceed down at Hayesville Middle School. And I wanted to just give a quick snapshot. I know three of you were there, but for a couple commissioners that weren't there and for the public.
Tanya Cole and I worked on developing that meeting. It was August 8th down at Hayesville Middle School. It was for a two-hour period. We had six expert panelists on there to discuss general groundwater information, how groundwater moves through the ground, de-watering of the wells and the conor depression and the licensing of the de-watering wells, which is another issue when you're pumping those wells for de-watering. The whole purpose is only when you need it. They're not pumping all year round. They may be pumping for a month or so. So as a, they would not be good for a permanent water supply if they're a de-watering well because it would be sporadic. But they gave presentations. We had a question and answer period where people wrote down questions on cards so that we could read the questions and have the panelists answer those. And that went on for a period of time and I had good responses afterwards. I think people learned a lot during that meeting. There were 137 people who signed in. There may have been more who did not sign in, who attended the meeting. So it did last just at two hours. Panelists and I hung around for an hour afterwards answering questions. And I was approached by people who live in Peach Valley Estates who, two years ago, we did a study for on de-watering, how much it would cost. And they're interested in revisiting that, there's new neighbors, and they may try again to get 51% of the people to sign up to put de-watering in at Peach Valley. And I did mention to them that, that study has two-year-old money amount in there, the cost, so that may have increased, probably did increase since then. And they were aware of that. But they may start pushing again to try to get de-watering in Peach Valley Estates. And there were some drainage issues too, and I directed those to Scott Lindenback, and he has responded to those people about some clogged culverts in that area. So I think overall it went well and I've been contacted by some city council members down in Derby and Hayesville area that could not attend the meeting. And I've directed them toward the video that communications made so that they can go watch it and see what happened.
Very good. Well, we appreciate the feedback on the, on the drainage issue in Southern Sedgwick County. Again, as Commissioner Meister mentioned, this is not a problem just limited to Sedgwick, to Southern Sedgwick County. We had the Halloween flood in my district back in 98. Nothing has been done really up north to fix that or to alleviate that in the future. There's flooding in other districts besides mine and Commissioner O'Donnell's. The main thing that it takes is money. We can solve a lot of problems with money, we just don't have the money to solve those problems. But the other thing I wanted to do is thank all the folks that put on that Hayesville meeting. I know Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Howell and I were, attended the meeting. They had the experts there to talk about the items that were of interest to the public. They had folks who were able to answer questions available. So I thought it was a very good meeting that evening. I appreciated everyone that participated in, in what's going on. But again, we have, is that last I heard, somewhere around a billion dollars, I think, worth of different projects that we could do. We don't have that much money. So until we can find a way of, of coming up with funding, we're going to continue to have problems throughout Sedgwick County. Because Sedgwick County is about like this table. It's just nice and flat. If I spilled my water, it would go everywhere. So that's the problem that we're facing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just remind us that there was a proposal a few years ago, and it goes back to 1980s, where the state allowed counties, I guess, to assess up to a 1/10 of a cent sales tax. And for Sedgwick County, I think most recently, we think that would generate probably north of 10 or 12 million dollars a year as a way to get started. The way to eat that billion-dollar elephant is to get started. And the Stormwater Advisory Board thanked, thanked them for their service, but they developed a, a grant basis method that they would leverage those dollars against city dollars to try to start impacting stormwater infrastructure. So there is, there's only going to be money available if we lead and, and create that opportunity for us to go get revenue that people might, you know, people, people obviously have to get involved in whether or not they would support this or not. But a sales tax for infrastructure is something that people do support now. They support, they support sales tax for roads, for example. And are we at the right amount? I guess we are. But we could debate whether it's the right amount all day long. The question is, do they support taxes for infrastructure? The answer is yes. At least, most people do. So I guess it's upon us to say, if people want us to help solve these stormwater issues, all we have to do is put a question in front of them and find out whether they want to support that for real or not. But we have the option and that would- But we have the option, and we, we don't have the option today, because we haven't gone back to legislature to ask permission, but that has been a way this has been solved in other places in the state. So we could also do, there's, again, I don't know if you've shared this with other commissioners, Susan, but there was a number of ways of generating revenue that was developed a few years ago that we talked about. One was like a solid waste type fee, one's a property tax, other things. And so, yeah, we, we have options to do these things, but if it was property tax, obviously you might have to get an exemption to the tax later, have people vote for that to, to create that revenue potentially. So if we don't, if we don't lead, lean forward and try to find a way, a source of revenue, we'll never get started. I, I think we ought to get started personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners?
Finisher, that's all we had.
Anything else on this subject?
No.
All right, commissioners, do you have anything else that you'd like to discuss today? I have one thing, briefly. We use the conference room on the second floor of the Reagan Building very frequently, but the sound in there is absolutely horrible. It's the position for WAMPO, it's the position for the MAPC, it's used for very, very important meetings in Sedgwick County, and you can't hear anyone. I don't care if I'm sitting at the table or if I'm sitting in the audience, you cannot hear anyone during that meeting. And I think that's unacceptable, that we're having that level of meetings, and the people that are needing to participate in them cannot hear what's going on. So the building belongs to us, I don't know how much Wichita helps us contribute to, to operating those. Both those panels that I talked about are both joint Wichita and Sedgwick County, but we need to get our experts over there and find out what we need to do for sound in the Reagan Building. Do you have anything you'd like to say, Dale?
Doing what we can to help you. I don't know if you work on the audio and the, the valve, or you work on that. I know when the, you were in the city of Wichita building, city of Wichita paid 100% of all the audiovisual stuff in the planning, which you moved there. I don't know what you mean, is now that the press mobilized.
Well, if it, if it's bad and needs money, let's just get new stuff.
Well, we need to do something. I don't know if Wes needs to get his experts over or who we need to get over there, but we need to get somebody over there to see what the problem is. The, the last WAMPO meeting, when we had an executive session, even an executive session with everybody out of the room, people at the opposite end of the table from where I was sitting could not hear what I was saying, and I made the point of being up next to the mic, so that's really unacceptable.
Okay, we'll go take a look.
Very good. All right. Anything else from commissioners? Anything from our electeds this morning? Nothing? Very good.
Tabitha, you don't want to brag about beating Johnson?
We had higher voter turnout than Johnson County did.
But our voter turnout was still terrible, so I don't know if we want to brag.
Well, but we were better, and how much quicker?
I think we're, oh, I hate to say without double-checking, but we were quite a bit quicker.
Quite a bit quicker. That's great.
Very good. All right, let's go to work. Thank you all.
We gotta have, we gotta brag about ourselves, too, Johnson County, every once in a while, because you know how they feel about us.